Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled November 22, 2016, regular city council meeting in the city of Wixom. If you'd please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a couple of preliminaries before we have the roll call. I'm supposed to announce that we are being televised or taped this evening by Walt Lake, And also, the only thing that will not be taped will be the public speaking, the people that come up to talk to the public so in the open sections of the council meeting. Could we have the roll, please?
May I have me, please, excused? Deputy Mayor Ziegler?
Here.
Councilmember Beagle?
Here.
Councilmember Gachal?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Resnick?
Here.
Councilmember Smiley?
Here.
Form president.
Thank you. Any changes to the agenda?
No, there's none.
I'd like to add an item on the agenda relative to the memorandum of information that we got in our packets, item number two, Eagle Scout project. As the parties are here, and I'd like to put that on the agenda, and then we'll get right to it, actually. In the packet received, I'll just read the item. It's regarding Eagle Scout project and Hanson's landscaping. During the summer of 2016, residents of the Indian Wells subdivision approached Wixom DPW to discuss possible solutions to prevent the erosion of soil and landscaping material into their retention basin. At about the same time, DPW was approached by Eagle Scout candidate Rahul Rangel, who wished to enhance the landscaping area to the west of the drainage ditch. This project plan included planting several juniper bushes as ground cover and the installation of approximately five yards of rock. And then there's a photo of the before and after, which is quite impressive, frankly. And I've got a couple of guests here this evening that would like to come up and talk. One is Mr. Josh Springer, who's the president of the Indian Wells subdivision, who wanted to come up and address this issue. And also, at the same time, the candidate for Eagle Scout, Rahul Rangel, is here as well, and would like to, I'd like him to come up and also have a little presentation here. Go ahead, Mr.
So first off, I would like to say thank you to Mr. Sikma on the DPW for putting in some extra overtime and sweeping up the leaves in our sub today, as well as, like Deputy Mayor said, kind of orchestrating the Rahul's project with a problem that we actually had in our sub. And it kind of highlights a couple of things. One is government, community, and local businesses all working together for a common goal. One of the things I also want to compliment Rahul on is, it was a big project, I think. I mean, probably not as big as some of the stuff the city does, but it did involve a lot of planning that started in probably July, maybe in late June. It involved a can drive that had to be executed to raise money, so that RHWA actually didn't have to pay any extra money to help fund Rahul's project, who's actually able to raise a lot of money through the can drive. I had to coordinate a lot of stuff, coordinate the material delivery, coordinate when things were going to get dropped off, who was going to be working, and of course, obviously, executing. I think personally for me, I think this exemplifies several principles in scouting. Clean, helpful, trustworthy, kind, thrifty, and friendly, just to name a few. I think all of those principles were exemplified in this project. And I also want to say, you know, with folks like Rahul and the time they put in, it leaves a lasting impression that he'll be able to walk by on the soon rail to trails path and actually see the impact that he and his troop have helped solve with our problems. So, like I said, I just want to say thank you very much, and I appreciate it.
Rahul's father wanted to get a picture. You can come up here if you'd like to get a better picture. Rahul, did you want to say anything?
Well, I would like to thank the community for everything that they've been helping me with, with my can drive that took forever. I would like to thank everyone too, that who donated, even though they didn't have any cans to donate, they still donated money anyway. And I would like to thank those who came out of their own weekend to go and help me with my project in the area. And it was a lot of work that was put into it.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Where do you go to school?
I go to Wald Lake Western.
Okay. Now, what grade are you in?
I'm a senior.
Okay, very good. And you do have your Eagle badge now, or Eagle rank?
No, we're working that out right now.
Okay. But you're a candidate.
Yes.
Congratulations. Does anybody have anything to, Mr. Kennedy?
How much longer before you turn 18?
I'm already 18.
Okay. How close was the project to your 18th birthday?
I completed it on Halloween, the 31st, and my birthday was on election day.
Wow, you've gotten close there, young man. I'm sure some prodding from your parents helped and everybody else. Congratulations. I look forward to getting a chance possibly to see you at your Eagle Scout Court of Honor.
Yep, thank you.
Anyone else? Well, congratulations. Thank you very much for coming out tonight. Thank you as well. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes of the meeting of November the 9th, 2016. Do I have a motion? So move.
Agreed.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Just one comment, I think that's already been changed, but I see that I was given a promotion in the minutes, and I was, I was, it is. Next item on the agenda is correspondence, and there is none leading us to the call to the public, first call to the public. And I'll read the rules for the call to the public. The public shall address the council during the call to the public, which shall be included on the agenda immediately after correspondence and again immediately after new business. The first call to the public immediately after correspondence shall be limited to agenda items only. A person shall not address the council in excess of five minutes unless the time is extended by a majority vote of the council present. Persons wishing to address the council shall identify themselves and their place of residence and shall state their reason for addressing council. All comments by the public shall be made directly to the council. Does anybody have, would like, anybody like to come up and make some comments on agenda Seeing none, I'll close the call to the public. The next item on the agenda is the city managers' reports. And there is one city manager report, it's the monthly report of October, Department Monthly Report of October 2016. Does anybody have any questions?
Excuse me, I just have a comment. I just wanted to thank the First Baptist Church of Wixom, they brought 35 of their students to kind of tally apart for fall cleanup on December 26th, and we appreciate that. Thanks.
Anyone else? Mr. Gachal.
Thank you. In the Construction Development Services memo with the P.S.A. monthly report, where was the fiscal year 1617 year-to-date permit fees? Is that total, or is that our share of the agreement with that under?
Let me take a look at it. I'm assuming that it's the total of the permit fees, which would be inclusive of both parts.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anybody else have questions, comments? Okay. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event, the items will be removed from the consent agenda and added to the regular agenda at the end of unfinished or new business. Do I have a motion? So move. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you. The next item is unfinished business. There is none. The next item on the agenda is new business. Item number one, consideration of the mayoral appointment of Joanne Roberts to the Senior Citizen Commission with a term to expire June 30th, 2019. Do I have a motion? So move. Support. I believe, is it Joanne or Joan? I'm not sure.
Joan.
Joanne? Joanne. Would you like to come up and introduce yourself? We've had the, the information was provided to us on your application, and so we kind of have an idea who you are, but if you'd like to add anything or say anything?
I've gone to the senior center for about a year. I, you know, I'd like to thank my neighbor encouraging me to go. She said, you know, there's a lot of activities and it's really fun over there. And I have gone, and I've enjoyed the activities and playing cards, you know, getting the new tournaments, things like that. So, you know, go see what I can contribute over there. But my background is, I'm retired from AT&T, and after I retired, I sold real estate for 10 years. So, now I'm just taking the easy. And I just live right across the street, so it's handy.
Oh, great.
Over there. So, I might need to ask that to the community.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you for volunteering and welcome to the community. The next item on the agenda is a consideration of a contract between the Michigan Department of Transportation, MDOT, and the city of Wixom agreeing upon the acquisition of abandoned Michigan airline company right-of-way for Wixom Road to Hagerty Road, along with the adoption of an authorizing resolution. Do I have a motion? So move. Do I have a presentation? Okay. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Resnick.
Yes, from a timing standpoint, so the check is actually prepared and written now? The full check?
The full check, they're saying is ready to go. So, the last step is making sure that our 25%, which we, we have a portion from Walt Lake and Commerce Township here at the city, that we're ready to get reimbursed for it after the sale. So, the sale is made with our check, and this contract is for the reimbursement, so coming back from MDOT.
And the, I believe the schedule was that engineering bids would go out in the spring, then, correct?
That is correct. They have reviewed those, but yeah, I believe that they plan to do that in the spring.
Great. Remember, I have to ride my bike on it before I pass the surf.
Anybody else? Mr. Gachal.
Do you know when the closing date, has that actually been set because of?
We do not have a closing date yet.
Okay. All right. I just know for months it's always been, as it gets closer.
Right.
It's been going on for a year.
We're expecting mid-January, early February now, but this particular vote kind of hinges on that decision.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy.
Do you know if we're going to be, after we get this closed, are we going to be going back and asking for development money from the Michigan Natural Resources Trust fund?
There is that potential. The trails, the trails as they are right now aren't just what they are. You know, we're going to start with minimums, from what I understand, and try and work out. I know Wixom would like to have it paid as soon as possible, but I don't have that.
Okay. Anyone else? I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, it's a request for authorization to purchase a wheel loader from Alta Equipment Company of New Hudson, Michigan, on the amount of $101,385. Do I have a motion? So move. Support. Any discussion? Spiegel.
First of all, I want to stress that this was, his budget, $120,000 in this year's fiscal year budget, and it came in at $101,000, some change. But the bid amount with trade-in, what's the allowance we're getting on the trade-in?
We're getting $10,000 for the trade-in, and I need to apologize, this morning I was reviewing my notes, and the AIS bid amount did not include the trade-in, so the actual value there is $109,467. And that would include the $10,000 trade-in value, and both of these bids came in with the same amount.
Do you think we could do better if we sold it on our own, or?
Actually, no.
That's to be enough for me, and then, uh?
No. I was looking, I actually looked online, you know, for those values today, you know, in the state that it's in.
Yeah, I know, when we budgeted this, we weren't expecting things happening that happened, so. And I just also wanted to thank you for giving us the three options of what we could do here, and I can support the new loader. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Resnick.
I just, I want to thank you also for the time that you put in back in May when we made you go out and look at the alternatives with a moving conveyor to move the product from the barn over to the trucks. And I know that was a lot of work we put you through, but I think that the, you know, doing that in budget session makes these things much more accountable and transparent to the whole community. So, thank you for all the effort.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Thanks, Tim. Anybody else have any comments or questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Thanks, Tim. Okay, the second item is the second call to the public, and I've already read the rules to call the public, so I won't repeat them, but anybody who has, who would like to come up and address the council on any item in the world, please come up and have at it. I see that we do have some guests from the scouts. Would you, would scoutmasters like to come up and introduce the scouts, and just say who we are, where, what troop you're from, if you'd like? Feel free to. Get a little recognition here.
Hi, I swear not. My name is Dale Nordstrom, I'm scoutmaster in, with Troop 272, out of Melford. And Mr. Foster over there is also an assistant scoutmaster. And we are here to support Rahul in his project and to watch him get some recognition from the city. And then I have the Gardener boys here that are working on their citizenship in the community, American, so they're coming up and listening closely to what you guys have to talk about the issues, and then they have to explain it to me next week, what I see, and so.
Okay, well, great.
Thank you.
Anybody have any?
Maybe from a citizenship in the community question for you guys. Who's the deputy mayor of the city of Wixom?
I smell you, Foster, I didn't see you, you're behind.
Yeah, I'm here to support Rahul.
Well, thanks, thanks for coming.
Can I answer that one?
You're a scoutmaster. You know, phone a friend, right?
Hold the audience.
Hello, Mr. Ziegler.
Well, thanks a lot for coming up, fellas. Anybody else have anything? Okay. Thanks for coming.
If you guys are looking for projects in the city, especially DPW, we have a horde of scouts all over the local community that are looking for Eagle projects. So, if you guys are looking for something that needs to be done, like Rahul's project, there's many troops, reach out to us, and we will definitely have somebody out to do it. So, first of all, it doesn't cost you anything, and it's a board to call.
Well, thanks for the honor.
Will do.
Keep it in mind.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything, or do you want to address the council? Okay, I'll vote for the call to the public, and move on to the city manager's comments. City manager, I guess, hopefully will be back next time, but in the meantime, Marilyn, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Yes, I do have a few things this evening. First of all, this morning, Deb Barker, Economic and Community Development Director, received some news that Kentucky trailer of Louisville, Kentucky, that currently has divisions in Walt Lake and New Hudson, has purchased a vacant land parcel over on Frank Street, and it's their intention to build a 130,000-square-foot building to host their Michigan division under one roof, and they hope to begin that construction in 2017. They were a successor business to Kentucky Wagon Manufacturing Company, which was established in 1878, and they used to manufacture horse-tron carriages and wagons, and currently they build high-tech specialty trailers such as for military, motorsports, and medical units. So, we're looking forward to that coming to our city. Next, we have, for those that are interested in new Mr. or Dr. Val Van Geesten, there's a memorial service that'll take place on Saturday, December 3rd, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Fish Tail Grill over on Wixom Road. And finally, the Wixom seniors are accepting donations to help the Detroit Veterans Center to keep the veterans warm this winter, and they're collecting new twin-sized sheets, pillowcases, blankets, and new thermal underwear, sizes large to 2X. And anyone interested in making donations to that cause can do that at the seniors' center through Monday, December 5th, and they'll make the delivery later that week. And finally, I'd just like to wish everyone and their families a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is council members. Mr. Smiley.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ziegler. Welcome, Mr. Joe Roberts, to the senior commission. Farewell to Dick Pike, thank him for those years of service to the seniors and the community. Congrats to Wixom being named a five-star cities by E-Cities, nine out of the past 10 years, very cool. Other than that, Thanksgiving, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and God bless.
Thank you. Mr. Resnick.
Yeah, one of the things I was thinking about as they were talking about the Eagle Scout projects, perhaps on the website, it would be a great place to put in the community section an input for Eagle Scout project ideas, if there's a lot of scouts out there that are actually going through this. First of all, I'm very encouraged by that. I was a little bit too late in getting my project, then I turned 18 too quick, so I got life with one thing short from my life. That's great, let's see if we can find a way to get that input back to the city. Thank you, John Roberts, for your volunteering, and I think you'll be a great addition to our senior commission. Also, I want to remind everybody that the Holiday Market will be Friday, December 2nd, and Saturday, December 3rd. Last two years have been great, great turnout, a lot of great music events, vendors, and great music as well, so come on out and enjoy the outdoors in the winter. Everyone have a happy and safe Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy.
John, thank you very much for stepping off and volunteering in the city. It's what makes our city unique and great. Thanks to Dick Pike for all his years of service to our community. Rahul, congratulations, cutting it short, but you made it, that's great, congratulations. And everybody have a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gachal.
Thank you. I just wanted to wish everyone a safe and enjoyable Thanksgiving, and hope that our downtown will be packed for the Holiday Market. Look forward to seeing a lot of people on. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Beagle.
Thank you. Thank you, Rahul, for your contribution to the city, for your Eagle project. Thank you, John, for stepping up. Wish to thank, or not thank, but wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, safe Thanksgiving. And last but not least, I want to wish the Walt Lake Western Football Team the best of luck this weekend as they travel to Ford Field on Friday at 1:00, play in Detroit Martin Luther King for the state championship. It's quite an honor, there's a lot of student athletes from Wixom on that team, and hope they win. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, it is kind of remarkable, when you think about the fact that Walt Lake Western is going to the big show down there, and so is Catholic Central, and it's like a mile apart, that they have so much talent, is incredible when you think about it. I just want to echo my fellow council members relative to the appointments and other items that we talked about tonight. One of the things I want to also say to the people from Walt Lake Western TV, that we appreciate them coming out tonight and welcome them. I do want to talk just briefly about last week's meeting, because at the end of the meeting, Mr. Gachal, you indicated that you were a little upset and above staff canceling or not using, utilizing Walt Lake TV, deciding to not use it. And I didn't want to address it then, because it sounded incorrect to me, but I wanted to check it out myself. Here are some of the things that you indicated on the minutes that we just passed. You felt that it was an error and an issue moving forward for this council. The item and policy adopted by the council was that we would film the meetings without any stipulation as to the number of business or agenda items. When staff chose not to film council meetings for any reason, they failed to uphold the intent of the item that council adopted. And then you went on a little later to say that you explained that the city council adopted the policy of using Walt Lake students and WLTV to record their council meetings, the council, the city council did not give anyone else the authority to determine which meetings should be recorded and which should not be recorded. You felt that, meaning you felt that all meetings of the council should be recorded and made accessible to our residents. You also questioned the seriousness with which the policy was being administered, given the lack of recording tonight, and the fact the policy was adopted months ago. And finally, you kind of ended by saying that you fully expected all future meetings of the council to be recorded and made available to residents. I just want to, again, I went back and reviewed the minutes of the meeting of June 14th of this year, and pretty thorough, I think, pretty long discussion on this matter, and at one point, you drew a motion that you had previously put on there, and the next item was a motion by Councilman Kennedy, and second by Councilman Resnick, to utilize the Walt Lake School District
the Wald Lake School District to video and broadcast eight of the Wixom City Council meetings a year at no cost to the city, and the motion carried unanimously. That's what my recollection was, I didn't want to bring it up last week because I wasn't sure, I wanted to make sure before I said anything. My recollection is that we would, this would be a trial, and my recollection is, I think, if you take a look at the minutes and read them, you'll find that, in fact, we talked about, about this being a trial period, that we would try this out to see how it would work, and I'm fine with that. But I think two things. One, I don't think it's appropriate to talk to the city council from this bench, for us, any of us, to talk down to our employees, they're not our employees, they're the city manager's employees, relative to decisions that they might make. And the second point, frankly, is that I think that we do eight a year, we're going to see how it works out, and then if it works out, then we'll probably expand it a little bit if we can, but those are my comments relative to your comments of last week. I just wanted to make sure that I put that on the record. And the last thing, well, the last thing's happy Thanksgiving to everybody, but the other thing I wanted to mention about this recording is, I think it would be helpful because we're told by some council members that people are dying to see us on TV. Maybe they are, maybe the folks are out there and want to see this stuff on TV, and if that's the case, great. But what I would like to do, so that we could evaluate it, is to ask those people that are watching to please give a call to the city manager's office or the clerk's office, and let us know that you're watching it, so that we know that there's some kind of audience out there that's interested in this stuff. That's the only way that we're going to be able to find out, and if people would take the time to do that, I would appreciate it. And then finally, before I close, I don't want to just have the last word. If you'd like to have any other comments, Mr. Gatchel, I'd be happy to open the, open it up for you. Well, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, thanks for coming out tonight, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Support. Motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? See you next time.